Mr. Bodie, I have one, and that is under page forty-seven of the minutes, and I'm sure it was an oversight, but a motion by Schaefer, seconded by Tippel, to approve the letter from the attorney dating, and then later on, when in the tally, it states that four of us voted for it, Tomlin abstained, and then it says, "Motion passed on a four to one." The technicality, I think it should be four and zero, and then they abstained.
Sure.
It's just a clarification, not that somebody thinks, it doesn't change anything to the subject, so, that's all I had. Any other comments or questions as it relates to the motion? If not, all those in favor of that motion to have the consent agenda, if not, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nays? If not, intentions non-pass unanimous. Thank you. Sheriff's, third quarter, Lieutenant Hemmish, I do not see him in--
He's tied up on a call, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, say again.
He's tied up on a call.
Tied up on a call. So, was there a report that was conveyed to? Yes, there was in our packet. Any dialogue of the council members? Looks like a typical month, nothing out of the ordinary that I've seen. We'll acknowledge the fact that we have received the third quarter report if Mr. Hemmish, Lieutenant Hemmish does arrive before the end of the meeting, we will give him the floor at that time.
There is a sheriff's office representative here, I don't know if he's here for that purpose.
Oh, well, if not, I believe it could have been under the open forum, if it doesn't fit underneath here, so, please come to the lectern, and then we'll give you, we'll treat you just like any other citizen of the city of Rockville, we'll give you about four minutes max. Please introduce yourself, and then we'll go from there.
Sure. Well, I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity, I was under the impression the meeting was at six-thirty, so I thought I was a little bit early, but I am turning out to be late, and I have no report from you from the sheriff's office, other than everything seems to be completely fine out here in Rockville, so.
Okay.
But my name is Steve Soika, I'm one of the candidates for running for sheriff in Stearns County, and I just wanted to take the time to introduce myself to the city council, and others in the city, and the audience. I've been at the sheriff's office since nineteen ninety-six, prior to that, I was in the Benton County Sheriff's Office since ninety-one, so, all of my experience comes from within the sheriff's office, or from sheriffing, if you would, my whole life. I feel that makes me a viable candidate, because I have a very good inside knowledge of patrol operations, investigations, the jail, dispatch, civil process, the horse patrol, water patrol, you name it, I've kind of worked a bunch of the different things, so, you know, I've done a lot of things in my career, patrol, field training officer, investigations, deputy medical examiner, probably investigated over four hundred deaths during those six years that I was doing that, very important, I think, in light of some of our history in Stearns County, sergeant of the recreational unit, and then commander of the drug task force, basically the Central Minnesota Violent Offender Task Force for six years, so, very good example of collaborative police work, something that I want to bring to the sheriff's office, and exude out to the small towns. You know, I'm in charge of our SWAT team for Stearns and Benton County, I'm in charge of our explorer program, so I've done a lot of things, still doing a lot of things within the sheriff's office that I think are important. I do a lot of stuff when I'm not working, just for the community, as far as being part of the Lions Club, and volunteering, and work a lot with the Rockville Fire Department when we do the polar plunge out on Pleasant Lake, I help coordinate that with the fire department, and we work that and set that up, so, a lot of volunteer stuff to kind of give back to the community. Real quick, just two things with my campaign, want to get our sheriff's office much more community-oriented, you know, kind of some outreach-type programs, doing more stuff, getting our people out of the squad cars, talking to citizens, you know, if they see a Little League baseball game down here at the ball field, get out and just watch, you don't have to root for either team, but make yourself available to people, so, big thing with my campaign is just changing kind of the philosophy or the way of thinking in the sheriff's office. You know, obviously, we contract with Rockville, I guess I would tell you as a sheriff, I'd have no changes in that program, cost-wise, hourly-wise, whatever you guys want, I think it's been a very good working relationship with Rockville over the years, you know, and that actually is kind of a benefit to my community-oriented policing, because it would get us into town here and doing more things, you know, one of my ideas is to do a public safety thing in the park, team up with the fire department, maybe bring a go across ambulance, some special equipment of ours, and invite everybody down to the park to actually see it, and talk to us, and, you know, and get some, maybe some donated root beer floats or something, so, you know, just those kind of things, those type of programs, and then the other big thing is, I just don't want to be a sheriff that's working in the office, I don't want to, I can't sit in downtown Saint Cloud and assume all thirteen hundred square miles, I tell people of Stearns County, is operating just fine, I need to be out treating the sheriff's office like a business, because it's a business of the public and public safety, and, you know, like any business, if I don't introduce myself to the customers, I, you know, I can't get their feedback, and I can't adapt the sheriff's office to be a better place, or to be a better agency, so, that's basically myself in a nutshell. I do have some business cards that I want to leave with you guys, because I wouldn't be a politician if I didn't give you some propaganda, and on that is my website, and my phone number, my email, if you guys, anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me, because that's the kind of sheriff that I want to be, is reachable, and to work through problems with you guys, and I would encourage you to look at my website to see a little more in-depth of my experience and stuff, so, and again, thank you for having me in, so, unless there's questions, I guess.
Do you have the cards with you?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, please approach the bench, and if there are others, if they're after the, thank you, Steve. Okay, and in the spirit of--
Absolute.
In the spirit of complete fairness, if there is an individual from the other candidate, I believe there's just down to two after the, that are announced, and so, it would be appropriate for me to ask, and if we have no one here to speak on behalf of the other candidate, then we will continue to go forward. Again, thank you, Steve.
I'm just glad to hear that this guy comes up and tells us what he's going to do instead of running down the other guy.
Thank you, that's right, good point.
We agree that we're not going to do any kind of negative campaigning, and it's all about what we can do for you guys.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, thank you for allowing that to happen, it's the right thing to do in this modern world, and before you know it, it'll be November seventh, and we'll know all who the new players are, and we can get back to some reality in life. Okay, to that end, I believe Planning Commission, Mr. Becker.
Good evening, council, we have a couple items on the agenda tonight. First of all, we are going to start off with a conditional use application. The application is from Keith Eisenchink to operate a custom staining and finishing business that has planned principal residence, and to construct an accessory structure prior to the principal structure, eight-nine-four-five, County Road Six. I had heard you earlier talking about, it's kind of right across from where that shooting range was supposed to go in, or that the small business is already there. The property is Zoned R1, single-family residential, it contains about three-point-three-one acres. Concept plan was submitted and approved by the Planning Commission and the council in July. Ten notices of public hearing were sent out. One person did come in and speak, not for or against, but the individual had some very good questions that I think we answered. The Planning Commission voted for approval under the conditions on the bottom. Both the principal structure and accessory structure building permits must be applied and paid for at the same time. We also added a sentence there that both structures must be built within a hundred and eighty days, so that's probably not on your form, but we've added that to our recommendation. In other words, he goes in, decides to put up the accessory structure and say, "Well, I don't want to build my house now anymore," this would guarantee that he has to do that. No outside storage, must abide by the zoning standard set forth in the R1, single-family residential area, must meet the Minnesota Basic Code regulating health and safety, those were quite a few of the questions he had, and the maximum number of four employees, which would include the owner himself. So, we did recommend for approval. The one question that he had brought up earlier, the individual at the public hearing, is, does a city want to put industry in that area? We're still recommending approval.
And that was deliberate, or you chatted about it at that meeting?
Yep.
Okay, and so, you heard the recommendation of our--
I have a question.
Yes, please proceed.
You mentioned the hundred and eighty days, was Keith okay with that?
Yeah, actually, he said he could do both, but he was very comfortable with the hundred and eighty days.
Okay, so, what would happen if he didn't?
Well, he'd have to come back and pay it.
Now, the permit is not going to be cheap, so, to our zoning, you must have a substantial start within a hundred and eighty days, and as long as he's making progress, he can renew that permit.
Okay, I was just concerned whether he thought a hundred and eighty days was enough.
Yes, he did.
Okay.
And he's not going to apply for the permit till, obviously, spring, when he can start building.
Okay.
Okay, and that's based on the assumption that we, as a council, would agree with the council, with the planning and zoning recommendation, and then it's to our city administrator as to when the process, but at least we'd be giving, giving a signal that says yes. One of the things that I'd like to just bring up, and that was, the accessory building was one of the comments that I believe was the gentleman that was there, Bill, and there's lots of others that are in that area, accessory buildings, and so, even if they didn't have a specific business in it, but there's a lot of other accessory buildings that are adjacent to under several acre partial lots, so that was fairly easy for me to grasp that.
And he would meet the ordinance in the design stage, in other words, the accessory building matched the house vice versa, so he would meet all those requirements.
Okay.
If you're ready for a motion, I'll make it.
Yep.
I move that we concur with the planning board on this.
And go ahead with the single-family residential R1 for Mr. Eisenchink?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? I'll second it. Okay, and that's with these conditions, the five conditions that the chair shared with us, so that would be part of that motion? Okay, other discussion? Yeah, Mr. Rick?
Yeah, Bill, you had said that you were wondering if the city wanted the industrial-type use, or that type of use there, and really, not part of the city, but right across the street where the shooting range was going to go, that already got approved for a leather making business there, and this type of business doesn't seem that it would really hinder any residential properties in the area, maybe a little bit of the smell from staining, I know I smell--
We actually talked about that, Rick. I'll pick on you.
Go ahead.
I mean, you don't smell the--
Yes, Rodney.
And then the one up here off of Chapel Street.
If the wind is just right, you do.
Yeah, whatever.
But it's easily negated with the tax base that we get out of it, you know, so it--
I mean, these guys have to have these filters and cleaners and all this.
Yeah, no, it's not horribly bad, I mean--
So, I sense there was a motion that was here, and there was a second, been made motion, Donnie?
Seconded.
Okay, other discussion? Seeing none, all call to question, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Contrary, no, nays? Any abstentions? None, pass unanimous. Bill?
Next is the qualified minor subdivision. The property is located at one-two-three-eight-three, two-hundred-and-thirty-fourth Street, which is Highway twenty-three and Broadway on the right-hand side. It is an I-1 district, it's four-point-six, approximately four-point-six acres, split off south of one-point-six acres, again, the intersection of twenty-three and the Broadway Street, purposes for building purposes, the future land use map is a commercial reserve. Prior to this application, there was an application for combining two lots, it was approved and did combine, purpose of combining the lots was that they didn't meet the side yard setback requirements. Property was then purchased the south parcel from the state of Minnesota, and QMS does not require a public hearing, so there was no public hearing for this. Planning Commission is recommending approval.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the Planning and zoning chair, and that is their recommendation to proceed with the qualified minor subdivision, what's the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to concur with the Planning Commission findings on this.
Okay, motion seconded. Motion's by Rick, seconded by Don, to be in concurrence with the Planning Commission and advance the motion for qualifying minor subdivision. Any other comments, questions? Call to question, all in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any--
Still not.
Those nays?
Lastly, is your attached building permits for September.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine, C, emergency management, there's a written report, it's item number eighty, or page eighty of your packet, does not appear to have any council action required.
Good evening, council, I did submit a written report, just didn't know if you had any questions on it at all for us.
And that's on your fire department, this was emergency--
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
Fine, we're moving right along, that's a good thing.
Pick up the pace.
Trial on there.
Yeah.
Okay, so, nothing with the written report of the emergency management, we will go into Mr. Schaefer, the other Mr. Schaefer, fire department written report, no council action, please proceed. Rodney, comments, questions?
Any questions you have for me on the report at all, or did submit it is, Fire Prevention Week this week, so we are having a class tomorrow at the school, but pretty much all the rest is grant writing and items that we have done over the past couple weeks and months.
Okay, any comments? Mr. Bodie, anything from the fire department that you're--
Chief Schaefer's being way too modest, and it's not his nature, by the way. He should probably read some of this, they're very busy, they're very active in their service, and I keep saying, the public likes to see the fire department on camera, because they're well-liked as opposed to other departments.
Oh, you're throwing under the bus, okay.
We've applied for several FEMA grants, we made it to the last round last, two weeks ago, out of ten thousand, we were down to the last week, and we got bumped last week, so we're reapplying again for another FEMA grant for some items that we needed. There's been six other items that we've applied for grants, extractor washer dryer, that's required, some OSHA stuff, and then just vehicles and stuff, and so, we're waiting for those. The Hensley Foundation, which is out of New York, which is the Leona Hensley, she's donated a bunch of money, we've applied a grant for that, for AEDs for the area, hoping that we get another one of those, this next cut here. Like I mentioned, Fire Prevention Week is this week, we have a team of firemen going up to the school tomorrow to meet with the kids and go through fire prevention with them. We had seventy-seven calls so far this year, it's a little bit above normal, and so, we're a little ahead of pace than last year. Several mutual aid calls with other departments throughout the area that we've had over the past month and a half or two months, and we're also working on iPads, still getting addressing and that stuff up, and we do have one in the vehicle, and it has helped already. Brenda's still continuing to work on that and trying to get that zeroed in, so the addressing is starting to come up, we did find a problem, several problems, actually, we're working with that and the county on that, to try to get that straightened out. And basically, just reviewing our SOG standing, operating guidelines, getting those up to date, trying to get those signed off, and present them to the city administrator for approval, and then just currently still looking for other firefighters and fire members to join.
If I could ask the acronym SOG, and I believe it's operating--
Guidelines, yep.
Standard operating guidelines.
Yep, correct.
And those of us who get into this world of acronyms, we sometimes forget, so, that should clear that up. I also, any other comments that you have, Rodney, from the group?
No.
Okay, I had the privilege of being at their last meeting, well-run meeting, and also, prior to that, was the, let's see, what do we call it, the investments that you have in your portfolio for the--
Relief Association.
Say again?
Relief Association.
Yeah, Relief Association, and the Relief Association folks have done a phenomenal job of returning on their investments, and so, that does not affect our budget, but it's unique to be able to see that they have a good handle on it, getting a great return, and I sent a copy of that back to Mr. Bodie, so that he should have it in his records. So, again, a great job, Rodney, keep up the great work, and Mr. Bodie, thanks for prodding him, as we all like the fire department, and the visibility is important, so, thank you. Comments, questions of Rodney? Seeing none, thanks again, keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Okay, Public Works.
I jumped the gun.
Gene?
Yep. I believe you all have a report that I taped up in front of you, if you don't, I can go through it quickly. As most of you know, we're flushing hydrants this week, should be able to wrap it up tomorrow, weather permitting. The grass mowing's about finished for the year, rain gardens, we'll get them cut down, hopefully before the snow flies. That new air release valve we talked about was installed, that does seem to be working. We're going to have to finish pumping out the other manholes to see, in fact, how many we're going to need. Did finish up the purchasing of the plow truck finally, and then had it in for MIND inspection, they found a few items that needed to be taken care of before it passed. The check valve for well four, we talked about, that was installed, and that did take care of the problem, so well four is back online. Some of the equipment up at the fire hall has been moved, that was stored behind it, the rest is going to be done, once again, as soon as we can find time. I did notice, they did start working on the holes for the salt shed up there, they bored the holes, but I think the weather got the better of them, so, I'm not sure how much mud they got filled back in there. Prepping the trucks for the winter weather, two-hundred-and-thirtieth, the gravel did get put on two-hundred-and-thirtieth, it has been graded a couple times, all gravel roads will have to be graded again after this weather breaks. When we were flushing hydrants, we did find a hydrant that somebody had backed into, broke off, that's going to have to be dug up and repaired. When it happened, I couldn't tell you, I don't know. That was on, by the way, at the intersection of Birch and Maple, over where the apartment's back in there, so, don't know.
No bumper or fender hanging?
No, nothing hanging there, just a bent hydrant.
No wing marks on it from a plow truck?
No. I would hope we didn't notice it before that.
Weird.
No, but that's about all I have for you, if anybody has any questions, I certainly can try and answer them.
I have a comment that I'd like to convey from a very reliable source, we heard that two-thirtieth is very manageable, and the reliable source is a key individual in our community, so, from that, Mr. Becker, thanks for sharing that to us, and we convey that to you.
I drove it with the bus the other morning, it was nice.
It was nice, better, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Gene, questions of the council members of our Public Works Department? Okay, keep the snow away as long as you can, if that's a directive that I could give you.
Absolutely.
Should ask council approval, but maybe you'd like to play in on that one. Okay, thank you very much. Engineering report, twenty-eighteen dash thirty-seven, pay request, and that is on your packet, page ninety-two. If you would, Justin, please proceed.
Sure, Mayor, council, it's not a lot to go over here, other than, this is passment number two, majority of the items on this would be the shouldering material, topsoil and the seeding, things of that nature, pavement was all paid for in last pay estimate. This is not a final pay estimate, there's still a few minor punch list items remaining, met with Central Specialties out there last week, that they were hoping to get those items taken care of this week, but my suspicion tells me that probably has not happened, so, due to weather, but they're on track for finishing those minor items up, so.
Okay, questions of Justin?
Answer.
This will take council action, the pay request number two, as Justice stated, there's still a retainage and some incidental punch lies, but we have an obligation per contract to pay at that point, so, the motion would be in order, hopefully--
Could you advance the punch list of items that is left?
Yeah, I, if, I don't have it right in front of me here, I have to pull it up.
Does Mr. Bodie have--
Off memory, it's, I believe, on Alice Road, there is a spot where there's a little bit of, just want to tie in a little bit of topsoil behind the shouldering material, resident called me on, it was difficult for him to mow, he was in a mowing area, it was a driveway that we met with the property owner on Lake Road, the first driveway there off of, off of Lake Road. There was some signs that were picked up, and, one or two other little items, oh, seeding, there was a resident that called on eighty-eighth to forty-fifth, where some seed didn't come up real good, one localized area, I believe, and then there was one spot on that same area where there was one little, one little spot that was broke off, right off the edge of the road, or right by the driveway for the shouldering material, so you can imagine.
I was just curious about that one patch on Lake Road off of forty-seven, if you're heading towards the four-hundred club from forty-seven, on the right-hand side, just a short ways from forty-seven, that had got broke off, the patch that was put in there was pretty poor, it wasn't, you know, somebody drove off the edge there when it didn't have a shoulder, and it broke off, and there's an area there that, I don't know.
Structurally or cosmetically?
Well, cosmetically, and it just didn't--
A big truck, just, they had just put the tower down--
Yeah.
And drove off to the side, and he tore up the tower pretty good, and I'm, Justin may not even be aware of it, because they came by and patched that reasonably quick.
Yeah.
If you wanted to look at it, he can look at it.
Yeah, I'm not aware of it, I've not looked at it, I certainly can't.
Okay, yeah. It looks pretty bad for a new road.
It looks rough for a new road, yeah. That's what it is, I know what you're talking-- Either Public Works--
It wasn't their fault, but the patchwork didn't really, I wouldn't have been happy with that patchwork if I was paying for it out of my pocket, you know.
Well, you are in the roundabout, you don't have taxes, but to that end, though, I guess it's proven, Sam, we can't legislate stupidity, and if somebody is dumb enough to drive off the end, or some of that, that's one of those things that we just have to--
It was the same day it went down, it was bad.
Cost of operation, cost of doing business.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirty-seven, the approval of the second payment request for Central Specialties.
Okay, it's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded, motion by Rick, seconded by Don, to advance resolution twenty-thirteen, no, twenty-eighteen dash thirty-seven, pay request number two for the two thousand eighteen street improvement project. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Contrary, same sentence, sign, abstentions, none, pass unanimous. Okay, Mr. Bodie, if you could embellish just a bit, as it relates to the comment or two that was stated earlier, along whatever is our next move, as it relates to ordinance review?
All the recommendations have been reviewed by our city planner, they're now back on my desk, and once I get the updates done, we'll have a council workshop for the council to review it. After that workshop, there'll be a public hearing, and that public, after that public hearing, it'll be up to the council if they adopt those recommendations or not, so I'm assuming there will be a workshop, probably in November, public hearing in December, and it could go into effect in January.
Okay, and to that end, if that's, the timeframe, I think, is somewhat crucial at this stage of the game, so, our city planner has reviewed it, made her recommendations, and most of it was either in red or in blue, some of the blues were other things that were, so if you've done your due diligence in there, that should help us so that when we get together for a workshop, advance those items that are there, and then the public, so can we already establish when we should have that public hearing?
Assuming it be at your December council meeting.
Okay, so we couldn't do it, have a workshop and have it in November, or is that--
I don't want to tie my office, it's when I'm going to get it done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
There's quite a bit of work for me to do yet.
And I think the important thing is that we're conveying tonight, that, first of all, let me just put a disclaimer out there, nobody ever said that government is nimble, and if they did, it was a far stretch, but yet, on the opposite side, the comment that was advanced to us regarding the moratorium does have some relevance, and so we should address that in short order, and we'll get that under Mayor's Council Report, so, and then the other comment that was from the monitor, that will be addressed here under eleven D, so, other, Rick?
Yeah, I just had a question for the shoreline ordinance review, the task force that I was part of, that shoreline needs to have DNR approval, the shoreline ordinance, is that taken care of already?
No, because council has to approve it first, and then we submit it to the DNR.
So, we would go and say yes, based on the city planners, then we would go and say, yes, this is what we think we want to go ahead, sue probably, if the council says we want to have, legal counsel also look at it, see if it's defensible in court, that would be another step, but then, if that is a requirement that the DNR sign off on it, that would be, I believe, after Mr. Bodie's correction, would be after we-- Mr. Bodie's correction, would be after we, 'cause if we massage it before it goes there, then they'd, you know, be a frugal event. Um, we knew it was a, um, Herculean task when we started, and did we keep our foot on a trowel, as we should have, that's behind us, we can't change, you know? So, other comments, uh, or, concern, yeah, Vince, sorry.
I'm in the moratorium, but you said you were in the.
I think we should, I mean, it's certainly as relevant as to, um, at this stage of the game, it is six months since we implemented it, and so.
Was it six months, or was it a year?
I thought we had it for six months.
Six months.
Six months, yeah.
So, that would be up.
That is correct, yeah.
So, without any council action, it's automatically.
Be sunsetting it, yeah, that is, that's the way I understand it, but we have legal counsel here that would give her opinion, but that's the way I understand it, so if we don't do anything, then it would be sunset after that six-month timeframe.
And what, that, that's already passed?
No, that's as of tonight, that's six months, as of, uh, six council meetings ago. And, you know, there's no reason for us to not, you know, as long as we're talking about ordinance review, it certainly ties in and it's relevant, you know, so if there's a strong feeling that we need to continue. I think the ordinance review is very close, and I have had very little bit of feedback from anyone, uh, about, are we heading in the right direction, and are most of the ordinances, so we did have some, uh, limited, I think it's limited, but some dialogue as it relates to the, um, uh, short-term rental extension, or the short-term rental, there's some, uh, incidental, um, modifications, that was like a minority report, that we should have those folks available, or at least a spokesperson for the minority group to address that concern, and that would be at that public hearing.
I guess I was under the understanding that if we did not finish the ordinance review prior to the ordinance. We would extend the moratorium until it was done.
And it's, it's a motion, I mean, it's, it's simple, it would be, needed to be, uh, circulated into our legal papers, no?
Otherwise, there was no point in having, uh, the moratorium, as far as I'm concerned.
There is no major changes being recommended by the AG committee in our ordinances that would affect subdivisions.
In the rural residential either?
That's correct. That doesn't mean council may not have opinions, but the committee had no major changes. I think I forwarded you all.
I think it should be extended until we have a chance to review it.
For us to review, which was what is presented to you, or collectively, we would, uh, have interaction in the workshop mode?
Yes.
Of the, of the recommendations, now that it's been codified into one? Okay?
Yep.
Yes, uh, Susan, if you'd care to, uh, address the council, please proceed.
We were just discussing how to properly do that, because this is an ordinance, it has to be extended by an additional ordinance, so you'd have to adopt an ordinance extending the study, extending the moratorium.
Oh. Life is complicated.
Or another public hearing?
Correct.
Set one up for, uh, November, I guess. I don't see a, I mean, uh, until we see what we've accomplished, uh, then why did we have the moratorium, I, you know, what was the point? So, some way or other, I think it should be extended until we are complete here.
And so, if we were looking at back, Jerry, just for a moment here, if we look back at the timeframe that, uh, Mr. Bodie shared with us, and that is that the, um, the ordinance review, the four, the four groups have put theirs together, the, um, the group that Mr. Bartlett and myself, uh, that was the, uh, short-term rental, that wasn't necessarily expedited, that was brought up to speed to, to tie it, and that's all been presented to, um, Cynthia Smith, Drack, and she has made her comments and responded back to us, and then it's our charge, and so I think we missed a month, if that's the case, 'cause it was circulated before. So, we could have tonight, and I guess up until the comment that was made from Mr. Boyd earlier, and I had it in my records or in my penciling that, six months since that was passed, the moratorium, uh, was let at sunset, and that was a question that I had, so I was gonna bring it up under the mayor's, uh, report, but now it complicates it by, if it's an ordinance, it needs to be done with a, um, public hearing, and/or do we have blind faith that we collectively can go, or do we go through that process, public hearing, and then the moratorium will be, uh, extended about the same time that the, um, that the, uh, ordinance is ratified? You know, I can see that within a month or something like that, but what's the wishes to council, it's, you guys have to know.
Well, I, with Jerry, I think if we're not gonna follow through on it, we was having a moratorium to begin with, because it was set up so that we could review this and redo the ordinance before the moratorium was up. So, I don't know, I guess maybe it's my fault, in one way, I didn't have my finger on this to, it should've been brought up at the last meeting already, then.
Well, it's not too late, and, and governance, if you are in, uh, with care to make a motion so that we know what we're voting on, but make it somewhat clear, that would be what, to extend the moratorium and have a public hearing on extending the moratorium?
A public hearing to extend the moratorium.
Okay, is that form of a motion?
I'll second it.
Since that was in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Jerry, and, and Vince, and, uh, seconded by Jerry?
Yes.
Any comments, questions? Uh, legal council need to chime in on that, is that a appropriate procedure for us?
You're just setting a public hearing.
Yes, okay. Uh, any of the others? Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and, uh, that should take a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Bodie, if you would, please. This is for extending the, um, just to make sure that the public is aware of what we're doing here, and that's to, uh, vote to have a, uh, public hearing for continuation of the moratorium, which was to extend.
But they told them, public hearing before we vote on it?
It is the next meeting, November fourteenth.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, please proceed with the roll call vote, Mr. Bodie.
Question, uh, Mayor Willenbrand?
Yes.
Member Simon?
Nay.
Member Calhoun?
Yes.
Member Tippel?
Yes.
Member Schaefer?
Yes.
Four-one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, the tally is four-four, one against, that passes on a four-to-one motion, and the, uh, public hearing is proposed for next month's meeting, next regular scheduled city council meeting. Okay, anything else as it relates to the, uh, ordinance review? I believe the two comments that we had earlier should have been addressed in this one, so we know where we're at. It is con, it is complicated, this does complicate it a little bit more, but we'll, this too shall pass. Council action, eleven A, resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirty-eight, lawful gambling exempt permit, what's the wish?
The addition of eleven, or ten B, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I skipped, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for reminding me. Uh, who's gonna check, who's gonna carry this? I was sort of Josh and Mr. Schaefer earlier.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, today we received an application for.
Actually, when I was asked to be on there, I declined that thing.
Oh, but I think it voted four-to-one to put you in charge of the events, uh, liaison, but enough of that. Mr. Bodie, please proceed.
Earlier today, we received an application for a special events permit from Joe and Pat Welly. The event would be held December first, it's a winter Christmas-themed parade, they'd like to close down Broadway from, uh, this Pine Street right here?
Right.
Pine to, Pine to, uh, pass, huh? I think it's, uh, up to the church. And so, after your approval, we'll submit it to the county, and, uh, again, thanks to Mike Hoffman, he'll help take care of the, uh, detour and getting the proper signage on Highway twenty-three, so that would require a council action, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you heard the, uh, uh, the wish, or not the wish, but the, uh, suggestion from the, um, city administrator as it alludes to a, uh, special event, what's the wish to council?
I move to approve contingent on approval from the county.
I'll second. Motion's been made by Vince, seconded by Rick, to, uh, proceed with the special events, uh, for the hideaway. Any discussion, other discussion, none, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any abstent, uh, any opposition, any abstentions, none, passed, unanimous. Okay, sorry about missing that. Okay, now, council action, uh, resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirty-eight, lawful gambling exempt permit, St. Augusta Blizzard, and that is, um, page ninety-six of your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-eighteen dash thirty-eight for the authorization for Minnesota lawful gambling exempt permit for the St. Augusta Blizzard Busters at the four-hundred club.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
And that's a one-day event?
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Don, seconded by Rick, to, uh, proceed with the resolution, allowing lawful gambling exemption permit, St. Augusta Blizzard Busters, uh, at the four-hundred club, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, nays, and the, uh, no, abstentions, sorry, those against, nay, and abstentions, none, passed, unanimous. Been a long day, okay. Uh, Stickney Hill Utility Bill, and this was, uh, discussed earlier in the workshop, and obviously in a workshop, there is no formal action that can be taken, so we're bringing it up here. Um, the workshop, I sensed the, the general heading of the five council members was that we would give the Stickney Hill Utility Bill to, um, waive, uh, the late fees, and this is for the last two billing cycles, so it's only the two billing cycles, uh, that's a grand total of four months, and they give them fifteen days to comply to have their payment current. Otherwise, the waive would be, um, eradicated, or what would we do? So, maybe a motion, Jerry, you had a motion in your mind, I believe, earlier, is that something that?
Yes, uh, I would make a motion that we waive the late fees, uh.
And that, we should have.
And, uh, but, uh, the, uh, principle is, uh, made payable within fifteen days, if the fifteen days goes by, the late fees get applied.
Okay.
And we can shut off.
Yes.
Okay, and so, this is harsh, but let's make sure that we have that motion clear and in the records, so in the event that it has to be defensible in court, the minutes will reflect what it is that we're doing, not suggesting that we ever wanna go into litigation, but in the event that it does, so the motion should be somewhat articulate. And so, to that end, Mr. Bodie, if you'd be so kind as to advance back to us the motion that we have, so it's.
I believe the motion I heard from Member Tippel is to waive the late fees that have been generated since April of twenty-eighteen to current, and allows Stickney Hills fifteen days from today to pay this bill. On the sixteenth day, if it's not paid, the late fees are reassessed and the utilities are shut off.
Okay, you've heard that motion?
I believe that.
And before we, Vince, if I could, there was a motion that was made, is there a second? And then we'll get.
Oh, I'll second it.
Great, go ahead, Vince.
I believe they already have received a thirty-day notice for shut off, but what's gonna happen to that?
It's already passed, Member Schaefer.
Yeah, and that was from?
No, thirty days from when, when our city attorney sent the letter, we got thirty days from the September.
That's passed.
That date has come and gone, we did not shut off. Uh, there was, with the fact that they came in with a ten-thousand-dollar payment, and there was conversations between the mayor and Stickney trying to resolve issues, uh, there was no, I did not shut them off.
And quite candidly, and it should not reflect the vote that we're taking here, it was just gonna be a tough vote, but, uh, we worked feverishly, and, uh, Mr. Bodie shared with me, he said, I don't wanna be the one that makes this decision alone, even if our basic code tells us that this is part of his charge or job of his duties by reaching out to us, so that we all collectively had that discussion earlier. I think it's the greatest form of governance that we collectively, there are six of us that were unified in our thought process, and to that end, it's sending a very strong signal, and that would be defensible in court, so, other discussion as it relates to the motion?
Do we need to direct our attorney to draft that letter to Stickney?
And that's something that we certainly would give Mr. Bodie that privilege, that he said if he needs to have some King's English, for lack of better words, to go with that, we certainly should give him that prerogative.
It's not standard that I would use the attorney to draft shut-off notices, but in this case, I think it's unusual. I think maybe in light of conversations that the mayor's had with Stickney's legal council, I think maybe we better do that.
Yeah, and I didn't have direct contact with him, but he shared a email to our legal council that I think was circulated to all of us, and it might've addressed that, what is the next step, so we'll just, uh, we'll, we'll just stick along. Is it clear for us, all of us, that what we're voting on here? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those against, nays, any abstentions? It was a unified voice, Mr. Bodie, please convey that in the letter, that it was a unified voice by the council. Thank you very much, these are hard. Okay, uh, RTCB invoice, uh, that's item number ninety-nine, it's kind of a pass-through, and now it helps me out there. Mr. Bodie, you were at the same meeting, I should probably look, I'm having trouble with my ratcheting ahead here, it's, um, five thousand?
Fifty-one-hundred dollars, Mr. Mayor.
Each one of the three cities, and that is for?
It's to finish up the BNSF railroad crossings.
Oh, yes.
There's one crossing in Cold Spring and one here in Rockville, where the tracks have gotta be pulled. Is it Chestnut Street here in Rockville?
Uh, no, not Chestnut, right here, Mill Street.
Yeah, Mill Street.
Mill Street.
Thank you.
Or one-thirty-nine.
And so, the railroad's gonna pay that back, they will reimburse the RTCB, and then that money can come back to the city.
But I ask that the sign be removed, because legally, with the school bus, you have to stop, it doesn't say exempt, there's a railroad sign still there?
No, no, it's not there.
When did it leave?
Oh, it's been gone for close to a year.
I think we took that down about a year ago, Jerry.
If it's.
I think Nick and I pulled the post, even though.
I'm sure it's there, yeah.
We'll look tomorrow, either way, it's coming down.
But, we're not.
Haven't been stopping for it, but it was there, I know it was there a couple of weeks ago.
Well, we're, we're not gonna get into the mirage that allegedly is happening here, but quite frankly.
I'm gonna look tonight, I'm gonna call you up.
And, and this is the two, one-forty, that's in the Wakefield Township, and it's a service road, and those two are, was supposed to be part of the contract with the subcontractor that was doing it for Burlington Northern, they're not around, so Burlington Northern came to us, or we actually approached them, the Recorrid Trails, and said, yeah, I've worked directly, so we've got bids, and it's ready to go, and hopefully we can do that, now is one way of doing it. How do you get the funding? So, each one of the three cities is passed through, so as soon as its payment comes back from Burlington Northern, then it regets replenished in three cities, so it should be a no-brainer for us. What's the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve the RTCB invoice.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second it, I haven't done that all night, okay. Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, uh, proceed with the RTCB invoice, uh, for five thousand one hundred dollars, which is a pass-through, should be coming back in several months, I would assume, or so. So, any other comments, questions as it relates to this? If not, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Nays, same time, and the abstentions, none, passed, unanimous. Okay, eleven D, short-term rental extension, Alex and Corla Molitor, for nine months, council action, and it's on page one hundred of your packet.
Mr. Mayor, the council action some months ago was to extend, uh, what is it, what am I asking for? An extension to their short-term rental till December thirty-one, twenty-eighteen. Uh, with the, with the ordinance review not completed, and they're starting to desire booking for next year, they're requesting a nine-month extension, I think that'd be fine. I mean, we have had zero calls or complaints this summer, uh, on their facility, I, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, and that was the request that we had earlier at the, uh, when the, uh, Molitor contingent, Corla specifically, addressed the, uh, lecture, and, uh, shared with us her reasoning, uh, which correlates with the written document that we have in front of us, so what's the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve the, uh, nine-month extension for the short-term rental.
Second.
Same provisions, everything that we have prior to it, okay, make that assumption. Motion's by Rick, seconded by Vince, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, nays, seeing none, and abstentions, none, passed. We are moving on to the next page, very good. We now are on eleven E, Schneider Trust Preliminary Plant, and there are a number of actions of actions that need to be happening tonight, we are cognizant that there has been very recent movement, and that was as late as today, there was some emails that was returned, when I got back from the metro, I seen that Mr. Bodie had advanced some other additional dialogue as it relates to our League of Minnesota Cities, and so, I would prefer to, to give the directive to, is it Mr. Bodie, or to Susan, our legal, whoever, to just give us a little bit of background as to what happens next, and that is where we're at.
As this is still pending litigation, Mr. Mayor, where staff is asking that you address the action items that are on your agenda.
Okay.
So, the first action is Resolution 2018-41, rescinding the action of denying the preliminary plat and rezon application of Irene Schneider Trust, that's Resolution 2018-41.
Okay, and I think we need to be cognizant, the public is not aware of it, but we did have a sequestered mode, and there was certain parameters that we as a council gave our, our administrator to advance to the Schneider Trust, and to that end, it sometimes looks like we are not doing everything in sequence, but obviously, that Resolution 2018-41 is to rescind the council action of April 11, 2018, denying the preliminary plat rezon application, and so, at this stage of the game, it would take a motion to either go with that resolution recommendation, and/or to, I don't know what other choices we have.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 20-2018-41.
Okay, that's to go and rescind the council action of April 11th of the denying, is there a second to that motion? Here's the spirit of cooperation, gang, let's make sure that this thing goes away once and for all, second would be in motion, a motion has been made by Don, second, please. Okay, I don't have a choice but to make that second, so I'll make that second, there's a motion, a second on the floor, to rescind the council action of April 11th as it relates to 2018-41, the resolution, any questions, comments?
I did not see anything today from the League of Minnesota Cities.
No, it was the legal counsel, wasn't there one circulated this afternoon to all of us?
I had a lot of emails today.
Yeah, maybe it was earlier already, or something like that, Jim Vogel, or Jim, but it really didn't change anything at all, that I'm aware of, as compared to earlier, unless the two legal councils, and Susan, were you involved in any of the dialogue that we've had between the league representative and then the Schneider Trust that you could shed light on?
It's my understanding that the ordinance, or, excuse me, the, this action, the rescind council action, that was drafted by myself, but it is in conjunction with the two E3 and 4, which were drafted and recommended by Jim Thompson, who's the league attorney, there was a change, I believe, in his draft ordinance?
Uh, no, it was a change in Resolution 39.
Oh, I stand corrected.
The resolution that was in your packet was amended by Mr. Thompson, and that's on your dais, it was to address the concerns of Member Tippel and wetlands.
Oh, okay.
So, those would be addressed at building permit.
Okay, any other comments?
This is still in litigation?
I'm not quite sure how to answer.
It is until council action.
Yeah, until we as a council action, and if we, they all kind of predicate one on top of the other, or something like that, and I have no idea at this age of the game, because I don't have the purview of where we're at, Mr. Schneider.
I don't either, so I can't vote on something, vote to approve something that I don't know anything about.
This will resolve the litigation, if we approve E1, 2, 3, and 4, this will resolve the litigation.
If we do all four of them, Vince, and, you know, that's why I asked earlier, in sequence, is there any reason 1, 2, and 3, and 4, one has to be done before the other, and so, I think there's a motion on the floor, and at this stage of the game, that if we have the faith of our legal counsel that states this will take care of the lawsuit that the city of Rockville is in, and that's the directive that we were giving earlier during the thing, this would be one way of doing it, so if there's no other compelling comments as it relates to this, Resolution 2018, all the questions-
So, how do we know the conditions of the lawsuit, that it all goes away, or are there stipulations, or what's happening?
Your attorney, James Thompson, has made an agreement with the Schneiders, that if this is passed, the lawsuit is over.
All nine counts?
It'll be dismissed in its entirety with prejudice.
With prejudice?
Yes.
That means it cannot come back to us at another time?
Correct.
So, how does this affect our moratorium?
The application was prior to the moratorium, Mr. Schaefer.
So-
And you no longer have a moratorium as of today.
Yeah, but then, that moratorium cannot be used as leverage, this was advanced to the city way before the moratorium went into effect, you know, although I can't use that as leverage, in my opinion, okay, I'll call the question, all those in, go ahead, sorry, Rick, please proceed.
You say the litigation would go away, is there any payment the city has to make for anything, or just?
There's no payments being offered to the Schneider Trust.
Thank you. Okay, any other, as it relates to it, now is the time, you know, we'll open it up, and once this is either advanced or denied, as I stated, as I heard earlier, some of that, if we go through and all four of them are passed, then it's gone, the litigation is away, and that's kind of the directive that we gave when we were in the sequestered mode. So, I'll call the question, all those in favor of that motion, Resolution 2018-41, to rescind the preliminary plat, denying the preliminary plat on April 11, 2018, signify by stating aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Bodie, please proceed.
On the question, Mayor Willenbring?
Aye.
Member Simon?
Aye.
Member Tippel?
Nay.
Member Tallman?
Aye.
Member Schaefer?
Nay.
3-2, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that has passed on a 3-2 vote, we will continue, item number two, rescind Resolution 2018-17, and that's a Resolution 2018-40, adopting the findings of fact, supporting the denial, and it's, it ties together with all of the other things that are relevant, so we have to rescind that resolution of that findings of fact, a motion would be in order. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There are discussion as it relates to the findings, adopting the findings of fact, supporting denial, it was cut and dried, we have voted on it at one time, this is just merely rescinding that motion that we did in 2018-17, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion 2018-40, that's Resolution 2018-40, that's rescinding the resolution of 2018-17, findings of facts, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And then the abstentions, I heard five, so Mr. Bodie, please proceed, I think it comes out the same identical as before, the records will show that there's a 3-2 vote, you heard the names before, so the records can show that, Resolution number three, amending Resolution 2018-39, approving the Irene T. Schneider Trust application for preliminary plat and rezon.
Please strike a line through "and rezon."
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
Very good, and that is, so, that, it takes a motion at this point?
Yes, sir.
What's the wishes of the council?
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2018-39.
93, I think it is, or is it?
No, it's Resolution 39.
39, I transposed numbers, sorry.
No, the ordinance is 93, I don't know how that worked out, but that's the way it worked out.
Okay, it's ordinance 39, but it's Resolution 2018-93.
Resolution 39, the ordinance will be 93.
Okay, got it, that's the ordinance, okay, so, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
I need a second, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
It appears the same thing, rather than call it a roll call, 3-2, same parties, item number four, and that is Resolution, and I don't have a number.
No, it's ordinance number 2018-93.
Okay, 93, that's where I got it.
Rezoning from Ag 40 to RR.
Okay, and that takes a motion, and that, so, at this stage of the game, everything that we have done up to this point has not drawn blood, this too should not, and so, okay.
I'll make a motion approving ordinance number 2018-93, ordinance approving rezoning application for this Schneider farm property.
Okay, and is there a second to that motion? I shall second that motion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to replant the Irene T. Schneider application to rezon to an RR, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
We're in a bit of a con dre, what happens in a rezon if we have a 3-2 vote?
I'm not 100% sure it takes four fifths, Mr. Mayor, it doesn't involve commercial.
Okay, oh, it's not commercial, you're right, you're right, I just remembered that from class of 1946, or whatever.
Majority.
Okay, so if that's the case, then that would pass on a 3-2 vote, same parties voted against, okay.
Just for the record, I'd like to make it clear that Environmental Services approved locations of the septic and the road, they never had any input with the lot sizes or any of that, and that's why I'm opposed to it, and with the comprehensive plan, clearly states we want to keep a agriculture environment out there, and 10-acre lots, I think, would have been more agricultural than 5 acres, that's my reasoning for voting no.
Okay, as I can summarize this here, and it's never easy, but collectively, behind closed doors, there was movement that we should not have continuation of tax dollars going, and the legal counsel gave us directive that for us to win this case had less than a 50% chance, and once we asked him politely, I believe he used the word 25%, and I think that helps us as a council to make a decision, sometimes it's hard, but for us to be able to at least continue with another chapter of our life as it relates to the governance, and so, to that end, I thank you guys and ladies, everyone that helped through this process, but we no longer have a lawsuit with nine pending allegations, and it's clear, and so, it's never easy, but life will continue, so, anybody else want to make some last?
I just don't like the message that we're sending to the people, thank you.
Very good, duly noted, okay, let us continue, so at this stage of the game, mayor and council reports, I have Stearns County Municipal Meeting, and I briefly mentioned to Don, if he's available, it's coming up, 6:00 PM, Kimball, on Tuesday, October 6, the same night I have mine, so, Don, if you could be there on behalf of, unless you have other duties, that's quite a reason.
If something comes up, I'll try and contact one of the other individuals under council here.
Okay, if you would-
Mr. Tippel, have free time.
Okay, and so, we'll hopefully have a representative at the Stearns County Municipal League, RTCB, we had, we're again applying for state funding through the bonding bill this year, to help shore up with the balance of the money that we need to have to fill that gap, the 2.4 miles of area, the TAP funding is in place, and I believe there's a sunset that needs to be used by the year 2020, or it might be 2021, but we're not bumping against the ceiling, and that's just shy of 800,000, and we still need to have the balance, I believe it was 1,002, Mr. Bodie, is that relative, you know?
You're getting pretty close.
Yeah, all those zeros don't mean anything until you put a couple whole numbers to the left, I figured that one out, okay, so, that's what I've had here, any other comments, questions, under others, or council members that care to share, anything in reports?
Under other, I had asked last month at our budget, and I was just curious, with the rest of the council, how do you feel about, because I've surveyed some residents on this, and how does the council feel about a 1.9% COLA increase included in the budget? Curious how the rest of the council feels on that.
We voted on the preliminary in-
Last month?
Last September, and that certainly would have relevance to the December, when we make our final adjustments, we cannot go higher, or we can go down, and so, to that end, if there are residences that are out there that would care to grab politely, share with us your concerns, then we have an opportunity, I don't know how to answer that, Rick, I have not yet chatted with any of the residences out there, not because, well, we're all busy, it seems like, but we should not wait until December, and so-
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, and I think that, I shouldn't speak on behalf of the other council members, maybe have their mind made up, but I see in the, in the league, a number of communities have already in their preliminary incorporated 2% COLA, and the sad part of it is, if that's the case, I don't think I'm going to get a 2% COLA from my social security, Don, how about you? Okay, well, I just thought maybe you were special, or something like that, Vince, I don't know if you were old enough to get that thing called-
No comment.
Okay, we're getting into the silly season here, gang, Rick, I don't know, is there anything else that?
I was just bringing it up.
It's a good point for us to ponder, and for the public that's out there, now is the time for you to act, if you want to chime in, so that we can make an informed decision. Okay, future agenda items, anything that's really compelling, Mr. Bodie, anything that you see that we need to give you a directive?
I think the directive is there's two public hearings for the-
Okay.
And that was-
On that base water, water base fee, that includes water and sewer, is it not, the base fee?
That's the directive we gave to Mr. Bodie, and then, prior to November-
He did not, but it will, in November.
Yeah, and prior to November, Mr. Bodie and our financial has to do some numbers, and he said it's not going to be that challenging to put the numbers together, and that's something you had to ask about, how traumatic is that change, or something like that, we have to focus on getting the water, sewer is, as I understand it, fairly stable at this point, but the water fund, the Water Enterprise Fund is underfunded at this stage of the game, and that's not the suggestion of water base fees and how that's calibrated, we just underfund it, and so, it costs more to put the chloride in, to do all of those type of things, and so, we have to look at one or two things, and that is either find less, less expensive electricity, or less expensive administration, or we have to increase, and the less is tough, so we don't have a choice, and so, we have to be mentally prepared to hit that and make a tough decision, and we don't know at this stage of the game how much it's going to be, but my philosophy is, it's going to hurt, and we're going to have some anguish, and do we do that over, several years ago, we did it over a three-year period, and why would we do that over a three-year period, water is so inexpensive compared to all of the other things in your typical budget of daily life, food, clothing, and all the other good stuff, but of the water, a strong recommendation, I was here the last time we ran, we indexed it over three years, and it just prolongs the agony, every three year, people come around, so I think, when the time comes, when Mr. Bodie presents that to us, that we look at it, and numbers don't lie, and to that point, that we do it- to us, that we look at it, and numbers don't lie, and to that point, that we do it in one time, and get that Water Enterprise Fund back to, and there was an attempt some years ago, I don't know where we're at right now, but I think, Rick, you were on, and we were trying to get a six-month reserve established for Water Enterprise Fund, and so when we do this here, we want to make sure that Mr. Bodie has that in the thought process. That was a directive that we as a council, Don, you were around in those days, right?
Well, in fact, that was, that was the rate adjustment back in 2015, and that's when the base fee went up to $25 for a two-month period, and the increase on that was supposed to fund the reserve over four years, or over three years. And that amount was based on taking 60, $60,000 divided by how many users there were, and that didn't take into account that at that time, we had been recorded, there was 33,000 already. So we need to find out where is the reserves at now, and, you know, has that been accomplished? I mean, that was the goal.
And that's a good point.
To do that, and as that happened.
And that's a good point, and it just refreshes it, the dialogue that we had from several years ago when that was there. I think, Mr. Bodie, were you already administrator? No, that was prior to you here, and the dialogue was, yeah, because we had, Jeff was the mayor at that time.
Right.
And he said, "Well, Wayne is recommending 6%," I remember, no, six, six months of, and then that was the mechanism of how we're going to get that.
And that was based on operating costs of 120,000 a year, so six months reserve was 60,000.
Okay, great. Okay, well, tonight, we can't solve that, and that's going to be the charge that Mr. Bodie has in the next month, so that when we have that public hearing, that those numbers are there, and that's what Jerry was looking at. I think that helps make that decision. Yeah, Vince?
Did I hear you right? We gave Marty a directive to have a public hearing on the base fee?
Yes, isn't that what we did?
Okay, is not a directive, isn't that a council action?
I think that's.
So how many times we don't take council action at a workshop? I don't see it on the agenda.
Does it take, you know, that's like?
A directive from the council, tell me the difference between that and council action.
I'm not in the mood to find.
I know.
What does it take, Vince, to satisfy you? A motion to have us give a directive? Make it a motion?
So what is a public hearing for? Do we not rescind what you did in September before we have a public hearing?
No, you can ratify it after the public hearing, or you can rescind it after the public hearing. You can do one way or the other. It's not in effect, so it can be ratified or rescinded after the public hearing.
It's not in effect, so in essence, if we didn't jump through the hoop of the public, the, I had a, the procedure, the procedure wasn't legitimate in terms of how we did it, so it's like it never happened. And so now what we're doing is giving a directive to Mr. Bodie to do some number crunching, and then we have a public hearing on that, so that we can all see what the numbers, how that will affect the numbers. Then we can make an informed decision.
You mean how the base fee will?
Well, all of it, how much are we going to have to have for operations and all of that good stuff? I don't know.
So the public hearing is not just for the base fee then?
No, it's for the total amount, and then when does it go into effect, assuming that we get consensus from the council, the majority of them says, "Yeah, we have to, we have to replenish the reserve, and we have to go and have a certain amount of operation costs." And then that group, I believe, it would be wise for us to do it with this group, rather than to wait into January for the fee structure, so that Mr. Bodie can implement that, we'd have that at the December meeting then, and then you could implement it for the January and continue on. So I think it's, in my mind, it's fairly clear.
So what you say, what we did at the September meeting doesn't mean anything?
Well, I wouldn't say it doesn't mean anything, because it certainly sent a signal out that several of the council members feel that there is improprieties, and will let this, have the public help us make that decision. That's my.
Because it was not really done legally to begin with, I will make a motion to repeal the action taken September 20, September 2018 council meeting concerning the water base fee.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Be a lot cleaner than we.
Sure, yeah, I have no problem with.
If it passes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll even second that.
Discussion? I see no other discussion. I'll call the question. All those in favor of rescinding the action that based on, that was done last month, and it related to?
The water base fee.
Base fee.
Eliminating the water base fee, yes.
Eliminating water base fee.
For multi-unit buildings.
Omitting the multi?
We got it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, got it, okay. Not that we envisioned this going into litigation or something like that, but I like to make sure that we know what we're voting on. So whatever we did last month, we're voting to undo that this month, as it relates to the water base. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
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 Those against? Nay. You can call the roll call if you care to, it's obviously.
Was there an opposition?
Yeah, it was me.
Oh, sorry.
I heard it really close. I was right from here to here.
In the record show, roll call showed the mayor was the lone abstention.
Yes.
Or not abstention, aye.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I think adjournment would be in order.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn, it's not debatable. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
We are.
Told.